You are watching XS Lepore County Channel 97. Coming up next is July 10th, 2023 meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportcounty.org.
Okay, I've got seven o'clock, so welcome everybody to the town of Long Beach Town Council Meeting. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay, and I've got a number of agenda items that are being added, that have been added. One is the water treatment contract for the town center. Another is a resolution regarding animals in the town center. I'm sorry, it was community center for the water treatment, not town center. The animals is in the town center. Solar ordinance, leaf pickup on unimproved lots, and contract with Reggie Corfels, who's our MS4 consultant. We've not got the minutes from the last two town council meetings or the special town council meeting, so that'll have to be put off to the next meeting. We'll start with committee reports, Police Department and Commission Chief.
Good evening, everyone. The Long Beach Police Department for the month of June responded to 294 calls for service when compared to 252 calls for service in the previous year for an increase of 42 calls for service. During the month of June, 17 incident reports were documented with a total of 13 individuals that were arrested, one felony arrest for a vehicle pursuit, 10 misdemeanor arrests, one of which was for possession of marijuana, and the individual also had a stolen gun with them, a warrant arrest for criminal trespass, four additional arrests related to traffic offenses, and four operating while intoxicated arrests. I would like to highlight two incidents, one from June 9th. Deputy Matthew Farthing, while on patrol on Lake Shore Drive, observed a vehicle parked in the 10-minute parking zone at Stop 24. Upon observing the vehicle and upon further observation, he observed heavy white smoke coming from inside the vehicle. As he approached the vehicle, he was able to smell burnt marijuana. During the course of his investigation, he was able to recover marijuana and a stolen Glock handgun off of one of the individuals inside of the vehicle. The stolen Glock handgun was reported stolen out of the city of Mishawaka. The driver was arrested and transported to Lepore County Jail for processing. Both of these individuals were from the city of Michigan City, traveling Lake Shore Drive, decided to stop at Stop 24, and our deputy did an excellent job of confronting them and during his investigative stop made the arrest. On June 19th, I'm sorry, June 14th, Deputy Jason Yagelski responded to assist the Michigan City Police Department in the parking lot at Blue Chip Casino, reference an unconscious female. Upon arrival, he and a DNR officer located 26-year-old female lying on the ground next to her vehicle with her boyfriend, giving chest compression CPR at the time. It was learned that the female had a history of substance abuse, and Deputy Yagelski was able to administer two doses of Narcan to both nasal passages, and within minutes, the female became conscious prior to the arrival of emergency medical services. I would like to commend Deputy Yagelski for his work on reviving the female on that particular evening at Blue Chip Casino in the parking lot. And in reference to also on the Police Department side, I'd like to talk just briefly about golf carts. Just in the past two weeks, we have had two individuals that have been arrested for operating golf carts while intoxicated. There seems to be a thought that you can operate a golf cart after consuming alcohol beverages. That is incorrect. It is still operating while intoxicated. In fact, one of the individuals that was arrested at Stop 19 actually had some children on the golf cart as well, admitted to the officers that they had been consuming alcohol, and in fact was arrested for operating a vehicle while intoxicated, which is actually a felony when you have children under the age of 18 with you. So again, I'd like to emphasize to everyone in the community, we've been very lucky not to have any serious golf cart incidents. We are a community that is heavily traveled by golf cart. However, you cannot consume alcohol and operate a golf cart at the same time. And then just touch on a couple of things from the town side. The tennis court parking lot was completed last month. We now have additional parking there. The striping has been completed. I'd like to thank the park board for their ongoing participation in making the improvements such as what we did outside the tennis courts. Huge thank you to everyone that was involved with the 4th of July events, from the Long Beach Civic to all of our town personnel, both the Street Department, the Water Department worked exceptionally hard during the week leading up to the 4th of July to make sure that the town was ready for the festivities. And also, I'd like to compliment the Long Beach Fire Department for their community outreach at the Ice Cream Social. They did an exceptional job on Monday, July 3rd, was well attended, and to this day, we are still trying to get the sticky ice cream off of all the vehicles that we had out there. So, everybody had a great time. It was nice to see the community come out, and then on the 4th of July, everything went off without a hitch. Fireworks, we parked about 100 cars behind the tennis courts. We actually got the traffic probably out this year faster than any other previous year, so I'd like to compliment all of our staff on the traffic control that night. No reported incidents, no injuries, no serious events to report. Overall, last week went exceptionally well for the town, and I want to thank everybody that was involved.
Chief, can we get something out on a blast email about the golf carts and the alcohol?
Sure, we can put something together, and then I'll send the other reminders of do's and don'ts on the golf carts, which we've done, I think so far this year, well over 200 golf carts have been registered. So, we're still finding a few golf carts that are out there that are unregistered, but we're finding that those are from outside our community for the most part.
You got a sign out maybe for the deer to avoid the golf carts too?
Yes, there's a lot of them.
All right, Town Administrator Report.
Oh, it's covered as per that.
Okay, following to Fire Department Town.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay, good evening. For the month of June, the Long Beach Fire Department responded to 20 calls. On the fire side, we responded to 14 calls during the month of June of fire. Our fire calls year-to-date are 32 versus 26 a year ago. Our medical calls, we responded to six during the month of June. We've responded to 48 medical calls this year versus 38 a year ago. Year-to-date, we're running 80 calls, year-to-date versus 64 last year. It's a 20% increase year-over-year on the number of calls that the Long Beach Fire Department is being paged out to. Our response times for fire calls are 4.48 minutes. Our response time on medical calls are 4.3 minutes. On a typical fire call, whether it's alarm or anything, we average eight members to a fire call. On a medical call, regardless of what it is, we average five. Couple of things just to highlight, on June 25th, there was an inordinate amount of gas calls for smell of gas in the air, as people eventually figured out the BP Whiting facility in Whiting was impacting this area. Our department, as well as departments throughout the three counties in Indiana, were called out numerous times that evening and afternoon. Just, you know, we made it a, part of our protocol was to make sure we knocked on every door and just did a well-being check on people and explain what was going on. It wasn't until about 10:30 that evening where a public announcement finally went out about the BP Whiting, but please don't hesitate to contact the Fire Department if you're smelling something funny, we will respond. Other thing I want to highlight is from calls is power lines. So, we did respond to a power line that was on fire. We have had a lot of storms, and we continue to have more storms in the forecast. My advice is just if you see a power line down, stay away from it, keep other people away from it, at least two pole lengths farther, and don't ever walk under it. Fire Department will get called, we will bring NIPSCO, and we will get that road closed off with the help of Chief Swistec. So, please be on the lookout for that. There are a lot of trees that are falling, and they actually fall on sunny days more often after they've been laden with rain. From a training standpoint, we spent the month of June over at the Michigan City Fire Facility doing smoke training. Next week, we are planning a water rescue, beach rescue training with Chief Swistec and the department. We're going to test out the drone in the water. We're going to test out communications between our departments and focus on beach safety. So, that will be going on probably at Stop 24 next Monday night. Tonight, you'll see our fire trucks out and about spraying water off hydrants, getting some stuff done. Mark mentioned the Ice Cream Social.
Deanna's texting me that she can't hear you, so maybe slow down, just slow down, and okay, all right, then I'll tell me.
Deanna has a copy of the report, so that's, okay.
Perfect.
I will slow down, Deanna. Ice Cream Social, you know, Mark mentioned the Ice Cream Social. Thank you to the community again for coming out and supporting it. It's really meant to be an opportunity for the community to get to know their fire and police departments. I can't recall which, how many years we've done this, but it's never rained. Just some brief stats on the Ice Cream Social. We scooped 141 gallons of ice cream that evening. That equates to 2,200 cups of ice cream. We popped over 60 pounds of popcorn, which equates to over 500 containers of popcorn. We also delivered 100 pounds of candy at the parade the next morning. All told, for the Ice Cream Social, our department donated 125 hours just in that evening. Also want to thank the local scout troop for supporting us during the Ice Cream Social with scooping ice cream and handing out ice cream. I think that's all I have. Actually, one last thing is we have started our move, planning, execution, now that the Public Safety Building is underway. Chief Swistec, you will be contacted by a number of members of our department with some of the tasks as we start to work through this during the months of late July and August as we prepare to exit the current structure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire Commission, John Wall.
There was no Fire Commission.
Oh, okay.
This month.
Okay, Public Works, Mary Lou.
Public Works, we didn't meet this month. We will meet in July, the 4th.
We're on Rome. Park Board, Joy.
She's on Zoom. She was.
Joy, are you out there?
Here she is. Joy, you're muted. And we can't read your lips.
She's up there.
Okay, there we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
The Park Board met on 6/26. The summer camp had 133 kids register, and over 100 of them were registered for the whole summer, and the tennis camp is full. Art in the Park and Susan Vising's Give Back Sale are both scheduled for July 29th, so we're going to need to work with... We're going to need to work with Chief Swistec to come up with parking plan available. And we will be setting up a public meeting to discuss the ADA access at Stop 15, the plan design in particular. For anyone who may be interested, let us know through the Park Board email, and we'll keep you in the loop of when we're going to have that meeting. And the next meeting will be July 25th at 6:00 PM.
Great. Community Center, Joy.
Community Center did not meet.
Okay, Budget and Finance, Mr. Perry.
He's on there.
I know. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, we've been working with Civic and Sender's Office, as everyone knows, and we're hoping to close out 2022. It was a bit delayed for reasons I won't get into, but we have it pretty much under control. We thought we would close it out last week, but it looks like we've got to make a few minor adjustments within Civic, and we should have it closed, we should have 2022 closed out this week. And I'll remind everyone, there's no penalty, there's no financial wrongdoing or any bad things that happened to the town because it took a while to close out. So, just note to my fan club who maybe want to comment on this after I'm done talking. The 2022 invoices were audited by Sender, rather, just to make sure we were all in line with where we thought we should be. That's about finished as well. Again, should be done this week, and we've gone through all the bank books for 2022. For 2023, should be done this week as well, so we should be able to move on to budget planning in a fully informed position by the end of this week. That's all I have.
Tim, are you in the janitor's closet?
No, I'm at home in the garage.
Oh, all right, good.
Yes.
All right, Human Resources, Mary Lou.
We did not meet this month.
Tree Board, Ellen Lynch.
I don't think she, I didn't see her on there.
I tried to call her this morning and didn't get an answer, so she may be out of town. Building Commission, that's me. We did not have a meeting after our last Town Council meeting, and the next meeting will be this Friday.
Okay.
Board of Zoning Appeals had no meeting, and they're scheduled to meet tomorrow, but I'm not sure if they're meeting or not. Chris, do you know? I didn't see an announcement that they weren't meeting, but... Yeah. So, it might be tomorrow.
Okay.
That's Board of Zoning Appeals, Advisory Plan Commission.
Oh.
Advisory Plan Commission met on 6/19/23. Solar ordinance amendments were discussed. Ken Klausner is the one who came up with those. We're going to send that, those proposed amendments to the Town Council, which I think we've already gotten. We're going to send them to the Building Commission for their comments, and then hopefully send it back to APC for a public hearing. Did we all get copies of that solar ordinance? I think I sent them out to everybody, didn't I? Did anybody at the Town Council comments on changes they'd like to see made? Mary Lou?
No.
You changed it, okay.
And I just want to point out, everybody still has a chance to comment before the APC meeting and get set. There'll be a public hearing after that, so there's still a amount of time, but just in advance.
Yep, and then at the APC, we had the public hearing for the fine ordinance. There were no comments for or against. Several semantic changes were adopted, and it will actually be brought to this meeting for hopefully final approval. And that was it for APC. They meet on 7/17. Building Permit and Revenue Report.
Yep, Building Permit Revenue Report for June 2023, 19 permits totaling $311,152 with revenue of $3,208. Three electric permits issued totaling $671. One street cut permit with $100 of revenue. Legal expenses paid in June, $8,250 to Braji Nelson and James, and a check that was rewritten at Barnes and Thornburg, basically because it was not supposed to be sent out when it was, because I didn't sign it, and it was anyway, and they returned it back to us to be signed. So, it appeared on last month's register, but it was actually cleared this month, so you'll see it again on this month's register. That check was $1,294. Year-to-date expenses with Sender are about $26,000. That's a bit on the high side year-to-date because we had a perf audit, no fault of the Clerk's Office. It was a routine audit done by the state of Indiana for our perf program, and we had to utilize Sender's services quite extensively. They did a wonderful job, and we passed with flying colors, but there was some work that had to be done in order to appease the auditor. And then year-to-date expenses with Barnes and Thornburg are at $3,250. So, I will entertain a motion to approve the expenses I mentioned.
I second it.
Well, no, you've got to make the motion.
Oh, I make the motion to approve those expenses?
They're second.
Second.
So, the Clerk Treasurer legal expenses were $3,250. That's the Barnes and Thornburg, is that correct?
Yeah, that's year-to-date.
Okay, and then the cost to Sender was $26,000. Next month, could you also include what we're paying Laurel to do in terms of helping out Clerk Treasurer's office too?
Yeah, absolutely. She, yes, I will.
Tim, do you have a, I know, I think in another meeting you had said last year what we paid Sender like year-to-date, so I don't think that succeeded what we paid him in the prior years, has it?
No, I don't think it is. I meant to grab that figure. I didn't do that. I can email everybody if you'd like or talk about it at next month's meeting, but I don't believe we're out of line from where we were a year ago. And regarding Laurel, that was in the budget as far as what used to be paid to her predecessor who no longer works in the Clerk's Office. So, I'll be able to talk about those items year-to-date compared to last year, either before the next meeting if you'd like or at the next meeting.
Sounds good. So, there's a motion, a second, all in favor. We actually can't do it. It has to be roll call vote. So, John Wall?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
John Coker?
Aye.
Mike Johnson?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Okay. Unfinished business. Stop 29 project invoice from Woodruff &amp; Sons. Chris, have those legal issues been resolved so we can pay that, or is that still pending?
Want me to lead on this one? Yeah. Chris and I talked this morning about that, and he had a conversation this morning with the attorney representing the town on that, but right now it's become litigation of about four years ago. And we're working on the documentation, the attorney is working on the documentation that will then secure us, allow us then to pay that invoice to Woodruff, but we're making sure that the town is not going to be in jeopardy going forward or be at risk. And Chris, you want to fill up any blanks?
Yes, it's really, Joe Smith is the attorney. I don't want to get into the details of that pending litigation. Some of it's actually quite a bit older than the four years, but coming to a resolution with regard to the MOU, the work done there, you previously approved Woodruff's invoice, so everything is in order. I spoke to Attorney Smith. I explained the council's concerns about, hey, we're paying our share, and yes, it's work, and the town benefited, but we want to make sure also that these lawsuits are getting dismissed. He did indicate that he's had conversations with opposing council who confirm we pay. So, there's a little bit of a nuance of do you pay first or do you submit a stipulated order, but the long and the short is he was going to prepare that stipulated order today, which be an agreement by both parties that it's dismissed with prejudice, and then those lawsuits will be put to bed. So, everything is in order and will be handled.
Thank you, Chris.
So, should table that for the next meeting? Actually, we probably don't want to.
No, I think that as soon as we verify, yeah, I think that you just allow that payment to be made when the attorney...
We already approved it, so I think we'll just...
So, I don't think there's anything. He's aware of what the nuance and what your collective concerns were for the council, and he was going to handle that today.
So, once it's resolved, Chris can tell the Clerk Treasurer to pay the bill.
And/or Joe will inform you as the attorney for the council.
Yep, okay. Horizon Bank Interest Update.
Yep, Horizon Bank, we enjoyed quite an increase in our interest income for May, and at that point, I had another meeting with Horizon Bank and advised them to invest some more of our funds into their pretty high-paying CDs that are short-term, and consequently, we were able to realize a interest revenue income for the month of June of $12,502.
Good.
Thank you.
Better than a kick in the teeth. Civic Upgrades to the Cloud.
So, yeah, that's the best I can hope for. Civic updates from, everything was done on the workstations. It took a long time to get it done because we have firewalls installed from K+. And so, we weren't, Civic didn't anticipate that, so what seemed like it was going to be easy process turned out to be a little more lengthy. Now, we are finally done with all the workstation modifications, including the workstation that resides at Sender, so they can access our system remotely. The next phase of this is to do a data transfer, and that is scheduled to happen toward the end of the month. The individual at Civic who was going to do that went on vacation, actually, so we had to kick it down the road a bit, but it should all be done and complete, and all of our data should be on the cloud and being able to be accessed from Civic's, or sorry, from Sender's office and from any individuals who we deem able to work remotely. All that should be done and ready at the end of July.
Okay. House Engineering, private Lake Shore Drive sewers update. Is anybody aware of anything new happening with that? I'm not either, okay.
We got the approval from the state.
Who did?
I mean, all the property owners that's affected or that's adjacent to this project got notified by IDAM?
Was it IDAM, Mark?
Anyway, just put a notice to all property owners that they've approved it. If anybody's got any objections, they have a certain amount of time to file objections, and so that's where that is.
Okay, but they still don't have approval from the town yet.
No, they had to get the state approval though.
I see.
First.
Okay.
Because I understand why they didn't do it.
Okay. Fire Truck Financing Plan.
So, I was tasked with doing this about two months ago, I guess, and since then, I've received, I received a quote from Horizon that was, well, we had a quote from Horizon, I guess, and I contacted them to update it, and it seemed decent, I guess, for lack of a better word. The rate is 2.9 plus the 10-year T-bill rate, which is 4.06, so, you know, roughly 6.9% for financing, which seems high compared to a few years ago, but that's about the going environment, with the going, that's about the going rate with the environment we are now in. After I received that quote, though, I talked with Crossroads Bank, who handles the leases on our police cars, and they have a pretty attractive rate, which is 5.05, so 2.9 less, I'm sorry, 1.9 less than Horizon. And since then, I decided I should shop a little bit more because there was a pretty good disparity in these two quotes, and I have two other requests that I have not yet received, but when I do, which should be at the end of this week, if, you know, not next week, but I'll put together a spreadsheet, and I will hand it over to Budget and Finance, and we'll make a recommendation, and the Town Council will have it at the next meeting.
Great. Okay, next, the Cell Tower proposal from Tower Point Investment. I would suggest we table that. We're not quite ready to discuss that at this point, so I'll make a motion to table.
It's like a...
All in favor say, oh, can't do that. Mary Lou?
Aye.
John Wall?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Coker?
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
It's tabled. Okay. Ordinance amending applicable fines and penalties under Title 15, Chapter 50, 151, 154, 155, and 156 of the Town Code. The Advisory Plan Commission held a public hearing on that. It has been sent to the Town Council with a favorable recommendation for us to take action. I would recommend that we approve it. Or I would make a motion that we approve it. Is there a second?
I second it.
Discussion. Okay, we'll take a vote. John Wall?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Coker?
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Okay, now, new business, so the new agenda items, the water treatment contract for the community center. Mark?
The contract that was shared with all of you is from Hydro Management. Hydro Management is the current vendor that does our monthly water treatment testing on the cooler, cooling tower located at the Long Beach Community Center. This testing is needed for the water treatment program that we have in place for our cooling tower. The previous contract was for $350 a month. The new contract for the annual service is now $385 per month for an increase of $35 a month and an annual sum of $4,620. I would recommend that the council approve such contract and ask that Dr. Lemay sign the contract, and we'll return it.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mary Lou?
Aye.
John Wall?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Coker?
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Great. Resolution Regarding Animals in the Town Center. I think we've all seen a copy of that resolution. Animals are not allowed in the community center already. I'm not sure why we didn't pass that same resolution on here. I think there's a concern about liability. Chief, you had talked to the insurance people about that, right?
At your request, I did speak to John Jones with Michiana Insurance. He then reached out to our provider who has the town covered for liability, and in fact, we were advised that if a animal was to inflict any type of injury to someone within the town hall, that the town could be named and would have to defend ourselves. Other than service dogs, they recommend that we do not allow any animals inside of the town facilities due to any possible liability.
So, I'd make a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second? So I'd make a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Has this been a problem? I mean, an ongoing problem? I mean.
We have a dog wandering.
Over the years, I mean.
Well, we have a dog wandering around the, around the town center.
Inside the building?
Inside the building, yes.
To further John's question, though, has there been an incident, or is there something that's happened?
Do we want to wait for that?
I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, no.
I mean, there's been no information, so how would I know?
Yeah, no, there has not been.
This is about me, obviously, and I won't bring my dog in, but we should have a sticker on the window of the door that says no dogs, so that the residents who do bring their dogs in, other than myself, don't bring their dogs in any longer either. So I'm fine. I don't, I really couldn't care less, but let's make sure we have an even playing field and the individual who likes to bring her dogs in also adheres to that as well. So for me, I mean, I know I don't have a vote, but, you know, really, I don't care. It's fine.
When I worked in the water department, people brought their dogs in all the time, and we even have dog biscuits for them. So there was never any incident, and they didn't bite me over the water bill.
Well, the concern is if it did happen, the town would be liable, because we're aware of it being an issue. And if we do nothing, then I think we assume some liability. That's my concern. So we'll take a vote, either in favor or against. John Wall?
Aye.
Mary Lou? Motion is to adopt the resolution. I'm an aye. John Coker?
Why don't we just put a sign up on the door that says no animals in the building? I don't know why we need ordinance on this.
It's not an ordinance, it's a resolution.
Resolution.
And I think we have a resolution about the community center already.
I don't know.
So it would just make it, it would just make it consistent. So it's up to you, yes or no.
I'm, you know, Tim's not going to bring his dog in, and nobody else is going to bring their dogs in. I don't see if this is a problem. I mean, are we making a problem out of nothing? I don't know. Doesn't bother me one way or the other if we pass it.
You want to abstain?
I'll abstain.
Mike Johnstone?
Opposed.
Okay, so it doesn't pass.
You have a tie?
You've got a dog.
Oh, we have a tie?
Yes.
Okay. And so when it's tie vote, the Clerk Treasurer casts the deciding vote, right?
That's right.
All right. Clerk Treasurer, what's your vote?
I would say I don't agree with it, no.
Okay.
Can we just put a sign up and say no animals in the building, see if we got to solve the problem?
I'm actually taking my dog through the town's old school, but I mean, we didn't stop. We just headed through there, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to put up a sign, no dogs. Is there a second?
I second that.
John Wall?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Coker?
Sure.
And Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Okay. Leaf pickup for unimproved lots. I think we've all, we've seen that ordinance?
Just as you guys look, I sent that, prepared this per Dr. Lemay's request. This is something you discussed last month.
Right.
My recommendation would be that you don't consider it for approval this evening, because you have to set it for a public hearing.
Oh, that's right.
Because of the change in technically of who's getting billed what, because unimproved lots were not before, so you're changing the fees. So I would suggest that if you were inclined to set it for a public hearing, you could take that step or put it off. This doesn't need, the way that it's set up is it'd be effective as of January 1st of 2024 anyway. So you have a little bit of time, not that you want to put it off forever, but I wouldn't recommend it. Well, first of all, I don't think you have a legal basis to approve it tonight, but I wouldn't suggest that you consider it either, other than for discussion purposes.
So I'll make a motion to set it for public hearing. Is there a second?
I second it.
John Wall?
He's frozen.
Uh-oh. Mary Lou?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Coker?
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
John Wall?
Aye.
Good. Okay. Reggie Corthell's contract?
Reggie isn't updated.
Turn, hit the button, Reggie, and talk right into the microphone. I would do this. Okay.
It's already on, yeah.
Good evening. I have a lot of information for you tonight. Tomorrow at Purdue University is the LTAC program, which is a stormwater compliance program with INDOT and with IDEM, and they will be providing all types of education and outreach for MS4 permit holders. I will be attending that. I'm a presenter at it, and I will be representing the town at that event. Usually, it's held in February, but they've had so much trouble with the students on campus and doing that, he moved it to the summer to have ease and ease their, they will be well-attended. July the 24th, 25th, and 26th, we've been notified by the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, they will be up here auditing the MS4 permit. And they're going to audit it in the, the way they used to do co-permits. So it will be the city of LaPorte, LaPorte County, town of Long Beach, Trail Creek has opted out of it. So they'll be here doing, doing all of us. Once I have the schedule, I will let you know that, and you're certainly welcome to attend any part of the audit that you wish to attend. This is important because if we, if we don't do well, and we're in any type of violation somewhere down the road, it can affect state revolving loan funds, federal highway dollars, and that type of thing. So I think we're in pretty good shape. I've been working with the chief and then Larry Wall and Tom Dolph, and we'll be working again and meeting, so I think I have everybody where they should be, okay? August the 1st, we have a group in Northwest Indiana called NiSWAG. This is the Northwest Indiana Stormwater Advisory Group, something I started back when I was at IDEM. It is every one of the MS4s from cities, towns, and counties in Lake Porter and LaPorte County. And they meet once a month. And that meeting is for two hours, and it allows them to accumulate educational credits, which are required in the permit, okay? So on August the 1st, they will be here in Long Beach, and you will be hosting this event, and we'll be looking at drywells, septic systems, and a number of other issues that will help you and some of the other, other communities involved. So you're certainly welcome to participate in that.
What's the name, August 1st, who's coming?
It'll be, I usually have about 50 people. These are representatives of every city, town, and county in Lake Porter and LaPorte County.
To inspect our septic?
Not inspect, they're being taught. I'll have IDEM here, I'll have Lake Michigan Coastal Program, the septic system program from US EPA, and they're able to gain the educational credits on that, okay?
Thank you.
Another important thing is, if you're not familiar, we have the Lake Michigan Coastal Advisory Board, which provides you with an opportunity to get grants for different projects. You're in the Lake Michigan Coastal Program. I am the new appointee to that advisory board. So my goal will be to make sure that you have all the information you need to be able to apply for different, different grants for projects. What else? Oh, one of the things I want to do as we move along is have a meeting with all these department heads, because one of the things that is important to keep in mind, to be compliant with this permit, so it doesn't cost you a lot of money, is don't reinvent the wheel. You've got some things going here that we could incorporate stormwater messages in. You get credit on your permit for that, and you're not having to spend a lot of money. I was telling the chief that we need to get things together, like for the 4th of July event. We could have had some stormwater information out there, and we're going to try to do that. I would like to ask Joy and the park board if there's anything I can do to help with that art program, doing art that focuses around water quality and the lakeshore, also then gives you credit for public outreach and education for that. Looking at the different projects that you put in place, like the park department has your kids camp. What some of the counties do and have started in other places is Water Week. And so we could get all the information that you would need to do a week of camping around clean water and that type of stuff. So you don't want to reinvent the wheel. You want to make sure you're using what you, what you already have. Okay. And if anybody ever has any questions, just feel free to send me a note.
Great.
Thanks.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comments. Any public comments in person? Did I bring that up?
Good evening. Oops, sorry.
My apologies.
No, no, no. Anita Remages, stop 23. The reference to dogs in the town hall, I believe, Bob, you said you don't have minutes for the last two months of meetings?
Last three meetings.
The last three meetings. I know nobody can answer, but I believe it's somehow the responsibility of the Clerk Treasurer's office. I'm not sure of him particularly, but I did speak up about dogs in the building and doggy daycare. And I do bring my dogs in. They're leashed, and they're in control. The dog that I was referencing is dropped off here and left here to wander the halls, and that's why it potentially could be a problem. And I did mention the legal liability, that the owner drops his dog and leaves. So it's a difference between a leashed, controlled dog.
Maybe once, Anita, maybe once. You're wrong again.
I'm speaking.
Clerk, you need to let her speak, okay?
I'm speaking. My other question is about Carl Sender. Mary Lou, I appreciate that you said we're within budget in terms of Carl.
I didn't say that.
Oh, I thought you said, well.
No, I asked him what, where we were from a year ago.
Okay, so.
That's what I said.
Yeah. But I believe that Carl Sender and Trish were just, Tricia were just in here.
Trista.
Trista, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
And my question would be, is there any point where the council would ask that there be a breakdown of the time based on the, still trying to close out 2022, which was referenced several times at meetings to having been closed out? So I'm curious whether that is to do specifically with that. So you're saying, like, it's in line. I'm, I don't want to rephrase your wording, but.
I know I heard in a prior meeting.
Yeah.
Year-to-dates from 2022, and it didn't seem that we were out of, too much out of line, even though we all think we are. So that's why I'm interested in it.
Right. But I mean, when we are looking at money as closely as we are, and if we are overspending because there is an attention in the Clerk Sender, in the Clerk Treasurer's office, that might be something to ask for a breakdown. I know that we also talked about a rewritten check, and there are times the Clerk Treasurer pushes off on it. It was somebody else's fault, or he didn't get the financing, or he didn't get things in time. And I'm wondering who authorized that check to be sent out without his signature, or if he just simply sent it out. And the other thing is that I very much appreciate the report of the interest, and I think, Mr. Coker, you talked about this at a meeting, where it's unfortunate that the monies were not handed over sooner, because we see the substantial amount of money that we have lost. So I think that's, kudos that we're getting some money, but we lost money. Thank you.
Any other public comments here?
Hi, Mary O'Neal, 1532 Lakeshore Drive. Just one comment, and I will go to whenever they have the leaf town thing. But I don't have any trees. All my leaves come from town property with all the cottonwoods. So if we don't have trees, will we get a rebate? It just, I mean, I'm just thinking it.
I like that.
But all I'm just saying, I'm putting it out there, because I don't have any trees that shed leaves. Anyway. And then my other question is, I was wondering if we could get an update on both the construction permit and septic permit for the work that has now started? And to follow up with that, will other contractors and homeowners have a moratorium on being fined if, for some reason, they're doing work, but they don't have a sewer permit, a septic permit, or a construction permit?
There's a construction permit on the fence back there, I believe, right?
Is there? Okay, thank you. And any update on the septic?
Septic is still pending, but that's not a reason to not grant a building permit.
Then you wouldn't do that for any homeowner? You would still give them a permit?
I believe they would. That's, that's the way the building commission.
I don't think so.
I sit on the building commission, and I think we do.
I pretended that.
By the way, since they fenced off that, are we more than 35% of that area?
That's just what's fenced off. That's not the building.
Okay.
That's the construction site. Any other public comments here? Any public comments on Zoom? Any council comments? Claims approval?
Excuse me, I do have a comment. Public comments?
Go ahead.
Jim Deener, stop 23. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. So my first question was with regard to the septic permit, and typically, I think, and even in municipalities, that has to be done before there's any building permit. So are we in compliance with state and county law by having building permits without a septic permit? Question number one. Question number two, has the asphalt removal and gravel replacement that's been done, was that within IDEM regulations? And question number three, the status of the lawsuit from the sanitary district of Michigan City. Is there any resolution? Are we getting ready to write them a check? From my math, the $550,000 lawsuit that was filed in August of last year, at 8% interest, is now approaching $600,000 plus attorney fees. And any questions you may want to answer would be appreciated. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I'll make a public comment. So I won't bring my dog there again. I'm probably more worried about the people who see my dog than the, than my dog being a nuisance to them. But some of the individuals who complained about my dog have a dog, had a dog who bit a kid interface, interface, and had a lawsuit around that. So maybe they're a little more sensitive to violent dogs, but mine certainly isn't one. So thank you.
Claims approval?
Claims approval. Town checks, numbers 19889 to 19998 totaling $371,721.41. Water Department checks, numbers 54723 to 54746 totaling $178,280. June payroll, $85,114.19. I'll make a, or I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve that.
Is there a second?
Second.
John Wall?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Coker?
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
Second.
Oh, wait a minute.
Dr. Lemay, I just wanted to clarify, BZA meeting is canceled for no agenda items.
Okay. Everybody hear that? BZAs meet, canceled. So there's a motion and a second. John Wall, you're an aye. Mary Lou, you are an aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye.
I'm an aye. John?
Aye.
Johnstone? Meeting adjourned.